...
All right, let's get this thing better. Six thirty? What do you mean? Okay. There's actually no pledge for a public hearing.
No.
There's no pledge for a public hearing. Oh. There's actually no pledge of allegiance for a public hearing. We'll do that for the special meeting.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacuilla.
Here.
Director of Block Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Crannick.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Traffas.
Here.
Ward one councilman, Biassiata.
Here.
Ward two councilman, Frandor.
Here.
Ward three councilman, Kukro.
Here.
Ward four councilman, Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties, Lavish.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow. Engineer Collins.
Here.
We will now have the clerk read the notice of public hearing.
Pursuant to Article five, Section seven C for the Charter of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, public notices hereby given that there shall be a public hearing on the following ordinance, amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to amend Section nine seven nine point oh seven, preliminary development plan submittal requirements as contained in Chapter nine seventy-nine, Rockside Road South, Planned Unit Development District of Title nine zoning use districts of Part nine Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter. Said public hearing on the above ordinance shall be held on Thursday, March second, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty PM in the Seven Hills Council Chambers, City Administration Building seven three two five Summit View Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio. Copies of amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen are in file on the Office Clerk of Counsel of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for inspection by any person interested therein by the order of the Council of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio. And this legal notice was published in the Plain Dealer on Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. I will now turn the floor over to the Council Liaison to the Planning Commission, Tim Frandor.
Thank you, Council President. Just for the record, I'd like to state that the Council as a whole did review the Commission's report and recommendations, and we accepted and approved those recommendations at the Council meeting on February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, which was this past Monday.
Thank you, councilmen. Council is now open to the audience. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Good? Okay. Council and administration commentary. Let's just go up and down the dais. Engineer Collins.
I have no comment.
Mayor Delacuilla.
I have no comment.
Service Director Lavish.
No comment.
Law Director Pignatello.
No comment.
I have nothing. Councilman Frandor.
No comment.
Councilman Petro.
No comment.
Councilman Kukro.
Not today.
Councilman Crannick.
No comment.
Councilman Biassiata.
No comment.
Is there any other business that may come before council? I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes. Public hearing is adjourned.
Yes.
We're going to take just a couple minutes to get ready for the special council meeting, and we'll get that going right away. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here.
Director of Block Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Crannick.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Traffas.
Here.
Ward one councilman, Biassiata.
Here.
Ward two councilman, Frandor.
Here.
Ward four councilman, Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties, Lavish.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Here.
Council will not be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding our one piece of legislation this evening, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Anybody in the audience? Okay. Moving on to ordinances.
How much time? Councilman Bob, retired. I think you all know me. My wife doesn't want me here tonight, so I'll be very.
I need your address, too. For the record.
I think she has.
It is.
Five seven three nine Rockhaven.
How did you know?
An elephant never forgets.
As I was trying to say, my wife doesn't want me here tonight. Something about my mental health, I guess, trying to deserve that a little bit. But I'm delighted, finally, that something's happening on Rockside Road. So I am not, don't get that idea ever, that I'm against this project. I think it's fantastic. It's taken enormous amount of time on your behalf to get this far, and I congratulate you for that, really, okay? And it's been a partnership, and that's terrific. I have some real concerns, though, about preliminary destiny. When you make a deal, it's always supposed to be good for both parties, okay? I don't know, and I haven't seen anything yet, that really, really puts their feet to the fire, per se, about a lot of things that are proposed. And when you have preliminary things, that might not be far, it might be far-reaching from what actually happens as such. I'm afraid of the grading or something like that. That's, of course, uphill. You have some water problems further in there, and I'm just not so sure that we have enough guarantees, monetary and otherwise, as far as if they don't go through there, are we going to be left with a desert there rather than a beautiful area that has many, many large trees? The other side note I would like to hear is, are they going to sell the trees? That's a lot of money, really. There's some very large trees there. We talked about parks in great length for a couple months now. The Parks Fund could certainly use the money that would be generated from that as such. But I'm a little concerned about that. I know it's not proper to ask questions, but can I have an answer on that first before I proceed?
Which question would you like an answer to first?
The one on, is there any kind of contract or fiscal responsibility that they have to put up when they do this first preliminary?
We are currently in the process of negotiating a development agreement. It's moving along quite well, I think. Regarding your question with the grading, I'd ask Engineer Collins to give input on that, and regarding your question with selling of the trees, Alan, if you don't mind, to approach the podium and answer that. I'd appreciate that. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The grading plan, you know, has not been officially submitted yet at a preliminary level. It is not going to be submitted. They have a, it will be submitted at a final development plan approval, and the staff in the administration in my department will be reviewing that accordingly. Now, one of the biggest, you know, goals of a new development is to not adversely affect drainage on downstream properties and upstream properties, and that's one thing that I know my department looks at seriously, and we review the calculations that are submitted, and we, you know, of course, review against the city codified ordinances to make sure that they are meeting that. So if they're meeting the codified ordinances, they're not going to be adversely affecting properties as far as drainage goes.
Okay. That was my next question, was about the drainage. It was a pleasure working with Councilman Norton, I mean, Crannick and Petro for many years, and we've always had sewer problems as such. I've been around quite a few years on council, a lot of those years, and I'm quite sure the sewers on the north part of the city of Rockside will not be able to accept amount of water, be it sewage, be it stormwater, either way on the north side. Are you looking at that first? Can I ask that question? Is that possible?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a valid point, a valid concern, and that is something we will be analyzing when they do submit the final plan, and we know the exact sewer runs at where they're going to be discharging to. Okay, water, the way the stormwater code is written is that water running off of that site now, okay, will be improved after development. It's actually going to be, the developed rates, flow rates, will be actually lowered than they are right now. Okay, so any water that's getting in the storm sewer now, okay, the storm sewers are already handling that relatively speaking, from what I understand, based on codified ordinances, probably based on a tenured storm design afterwards, will actually be improved, so that's pretty much a wash, the storm sewers. The sanitary sewers, you know, that's another issue that the sewer district will be looking at with us, and we will be analyzing to make sure that the flows from that development can indeed be handled. So that's something that, yeah, we're not going to permit if our sewers are undercapacitated.
Okay. I have to address my question to him as such. Mr. Chairman, if in the event that the storm sewer or the sanitary sewer needs oversizing on the north side, would that be a responsibility of the cities to pay for or contractors?
Engineer Collins?
Yeah, that would be the responsibility of the developer.
Oversizing?
Oversizing, if necessary, if needed.
Okay. I wanted to get that in record, because that's a very important question, really. Okay. Is there a contract has been signed for this preliminary? Is there a subcontract on it? I don't know, Rich, Mr. Chairman.
I suppose I don't understand what you're asking. What do you mean by that?
Has there been a legal document and bonding for what they're proposing to do right now?
With the removing of the trees?
Yes.
There is a bond required? I don't know where that is in the process. Does anybody else? Chris?
Are you returning to go on your plan for trying to?
Yeah, a preliminary plan and bonding of your work. Yes.
Part of the ordinance and that bonding.
Can you hear?
That's part of the ordinance, that bonding is required on application for winter remove those trees, and one with that there's a more idea of the possibility to be implemented in the engineering aspect, in terms of what those are, and those will allow people to look at the water control erosion under those trees. Did that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you. Very kind of you. All right, and there's a bit of density on the proposal, on this proposal, the plan? Has there been a density to study?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, the preliminary plan that's been already approved has all the densities of each use on that plan. So you're welcome to have a copy of that upon request.
And that fulfills all our requirements as far as the city, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further? Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandor.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Traffas, Frandor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukro, and Petro. And ordinance to amend Section nine seven nine point oh seven, preliminary development plans submittal requirements as contained in Chapter nine seventy-nine, Rockside Road South, Planned Unit Development District of Title nine zoning use districts of Part nine Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandor.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I'd like to explain on the record why we're doing this. As everybody probably recalls, the PUD was a very long process, and everybody was aware that it really was a working document. Some things happened that we didn't anticipate, and we have the ability to amend it. The reason we're doing this tonight is because, believe it or not, of the Indiana bats, and...
Bob, that's not to be confused with the Louisville Slugger, okay? It's an Indiana bat, okay, not a Kentucky bat.
Thank you. Lost my train of thought. So trees cannot be cleared after, I believe, March thirtieth or March thirty-first, and due to the Indiana bat mating season, and if we don't clear these trees prior to March thirty-first, it will delay the project for six months, roughly, approximately. So in order to allow the city and the developers to move forward, we'll be passing this tonight. This is simply to allow for more progress on a quicker basis. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Traffas, Frandor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukro, and Petro. And ordinance to amend Section nine seven nine point oh seven, preliminary development plans submittal requirements as contained in Chapter nine seventy-nine, Rockside Road South, Planned Unit Development District of Title nine zoning use districts of Part nine Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandor.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I'd like to explain on the record why we're doing this. As everybody probably recalls, the PUD was a very long process, and everybody was aware that it really was a working document. Some things happened that we didn't anticipate, and we have the ability to amend it. The reason we're doing this tonight is because, believe it or not, of the Indiana bats, and...
Bob, that's not to be confused with the Louisville Slugger, okay? It's an Indiana bat, okay, not a Kentucky bat.
Thank you. Lost my train of thought. So trees cannot be cleared after, I believe, March thirtieth or March thirty-first, and due to the Indiana bat mating season, and if we don't clear these trees prior to March thirty-first, it will delay the project for six months, roughly, approximately. So in order to allow the city and the developers to move forward, we'll be passing this tonight. This is simply to allow for more progress on a quicker basis. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Is there any other business that may come before council?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Traffas, Frandor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukro, and Petro. And ordinance to amend Section nine seven nine point oh seven, preliminary development plans submittal requirements as contained in Chapter nine seventy-nine, Rockside Road South, Planned Unit Development District of Title nine zoning use districts of Part nine Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandor.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I'd like to explain on the record why we're doing this. As everybody probably recalls, the PUD was a very long process, and everybody was aware that it really was a working document. Some things happened that we didn't anticipate, and we have the ability to amend it. The reason we're doing this tonight is because, believe it or not, of the Indiana bats, and...
Bob, that's not to be confused with the Louisville Slugger, okay? It's an Indiana bat, okay, not a Kentucky bat.
Thank you. Lost my train of thought. So trees cannot be cleared after, I believe, March thirtieth or March thirty-first, and due to the Indiana bat mating season, and if we don't clear these trees prior to March thirty-first, it will delay the project for six months, roughly, approximately. So in order to allow the city and the developers to move forward, we'll be passing this tonight. This is simply to allow for more progress on a quicker basis. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Traffas, Frandor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukro, and Petro. And ordinance to amend Section nine seven nine point oh seven, preliminary development plans submittal requirements as contained in Chapter nine seventy-nine, Rockside Road South, Planned Unit Development District of Title nine zoning use districts of Part nine Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD District prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandor.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I'd like to explain on the record why we're doing this. As everybody probably recalls, the PUD was a very long process, and everybody was aware that it really was a working document. Some things happened that we didn't anticipate, and we have the ability to amend it. The reason we're doing this tonight is because, believe it or not, of the Indiana bats, and...
Bob, that's not to be confused with the Louisville Slugger, okay? It's an Indiana bat, okay, not a Kentucky bat.
Thank you. Lost my train of thought. So trees cannot be cleared after, I believe, March thirtieth or March thirty-first, and due to the Indiana bat mating season, and if we don't clear these trees prior to March thirty-first, it will delay the project for six months, roughly, approximately. So in order to allow the city and the developers to move forward, we'll be passing this tonight. This is simply to allow for more progress on a quicker basis. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffas.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, has passed. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments regarding anything at all, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Okay. Such other business as may come before council. We'll once again go around the dais, start with Engineer Collins.
No comment.
Mayor Delacuilla.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Engineer, Service Director Lavish.
No comment.
Law Director Pignatello.
Nothing.
Councilman Biassiata.
No comment.
Councilman Bicker.
Um, yes, I spent yesterday afternoon walking up and down East Ridgewood, and anyone who I could see the garbage, I knocked on their door, and I explained to them, most of them didn't know that the law existed, but I did, knocking on the door and explaining to them that they have to, it can't be visible from the curb. That's it.
I don't mind. Does anybody mind?
Not at all.
Come on.
On our way out there, just to see how many people needed your word, there was, it went from ten up to about twelve, and they were out there.
Well, that's, today was pickup day.
No, this was, most of it was about six o'clock, and you should be back in. You were stable. So, I'm glad you did.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Crannick.
Nothing.
Councilman Kukro.
Nothing.
Councilman Petro.
No comment.
Councilman Frandor.
Nothing today, thank you.
I have a bit of a statement I want to make tonight, and it's unrelated to Rockside. And my statement is because of all the things that have been going on in the city past few months, and I was hoping I didn't have to do something like this, but there's been something weighing on my mind for a while, and with all the progress that I believe we're making, I feel that the statement is justified. Our job as councilmen is to protect the public trust, to be a voice at City Hall for our residents, and to involve residents in the decision-making process as much as we can. There's no better way to give residents a choice on how they want us to run the city than by going to the ballot box and allowing people to vote on particular issues. We have been seeing a trend from our Ward one Councilman, Tony Biassiata, that is attempting to restrict the voice of our residents, and it's really, really starting to bother me. At the July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen council meeting, Councilman Biassiata voted no on a resolution to place the fire levy renewal and increase on the ballot. This issue will generate a projected one million, six hundred and two thousand dollars annually, and its passage literally changed the direction of our city for many years to come, and has allowed us to begin a street repair program, which will resurface approximately sixteen streets, set money aside for parks, create new funds to save money for infrastructure repair, capital improvements, debt payment, and even enabled us to set aside nearly three hundred thousand dollars to pay down the upcoming balloon payments due to debt restructuring. The passage of this levy allowed us to purchase a new police vehicle, have money available for upcoming union negotiated raises, appropriate money for the upcoming rec center improvements. So in order to allow the city and the developers to move forward, we'll be passing this tonight. This is simply to allow for more progress on a quicker basis. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Cranach?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Pietro?
Yes.
Trevis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 27, 2017 has passed. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments regarding anything at all, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Okay. Such other business as may come before council. I'll once again go around the dais, start with Engineer Collins.
No comment.
Mayor Delacqua.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Engineer, Service Director Lavish.
No comment.
Law Director Pignotello.
Nothing.
Councilman Biassiata.
No comment.
Councilman Bicker.
Um, yes, I spent yesterday afternoon walking up and down East Ridgewood, and anyone who I could see the garbage, I knocked on their door, and I explained to them, most of them didn't know that the law existed, but I did knock on the door and explain to them that they have to, it can't be visible from the curb. That's it.
I don't mind. Does anybody mind?
Not at all.
Come on.
Well, that's, today was pickup day. You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Cranach?
Nothing.
Councilman Kukrow?
Nothing.
Councilman Pietro?
No comment.
Councilman Frondor?
Nothing today. Thank you.
I have a bit of a statement I want to make tonight, and it's unrelated to Rockside. And my statement is because of all the things that have been going on in the city the past few months, and I was hoping I didn't have to do something like this, but there's been something weighing on my mind for a while, and with all the progress that I believe we're making, I feel that the statement is justified. Our job as councilmen is to protect the public trust, to be a voice at City Hall for our residents, and to involve residents in the decision-making process as much as we can. There's no better way to give residents a choice on how they want us to run the city than by going to the ballot box and allowing people to vote on particular issues. We have been seeing a trend from our Ward One Councilman, Tony Biassiata, that is attempting to restrict the voice of our residents, and it's really, really starting to bother me. At the July 25, 2016 council meeting, Councilman Biassiata voted no on a resolution to place the fire levy renewal and increase on the ballot. This issue will generate a projected $1,602,000 annually, and its passage literally changed the direction of our city for many years to come, and has allowed us to begin a street repair program, which will resurface approximately 16 streets, set money aside for parks, create new funds to save money for infrastructure repair, capital improvements, debt payment, and even enabled us to set aside nearly $300,000 to pay down the upcoming balloon payments due to debt restructuring. The passage of this levy allowed us to purchase a new police vehicle, have money available for upcoming union negotiated raises, appropriate money for the upcoming rec center improvements. The passage of this levy allowed us to balance our budget this year and actually provide for a small projected surplus in 2017. All that being said, Councilman Biassiata voted no in attempt not to place this on the ballot. In Ward One, 1,638 residents voted on this levy, of which the majority voted in favor. 1,638 voters had their Ward One representative vote no on allowing them a choice on whether or not they wanted their city to receive the needed money to move forward. This past Monday, Ward One Councilman Biassiata again voted to restrict residents' rights to decide if they want their city to move forward and have a full-time mayor and safety director. His stated reasoning was that he received two dozen emails from residents in opposition. I don't buy that for one second. But even if that were true, there will be thousands of potential Ward One voters in the May primary whose representative voted to take their voice away. Even though, Councilman, you had no opposition in the last election and you were unopposed, some residents in Ward One voted for you because they expected you to give them a choice on how they wish the city to operate. Your actions to attempt to suppress their voice and right to vote confuses and frankly bothers me. Let the people decide. What is even more surprising is his comments, is the comments that Councilman Biassiata made at the January 23 caucus meeting. He said, quote, "Everyone would not debate that we need a full-time mayor. I'm not going to debate that." He went on to say, "This is a pretty major change for the city. One for the better. It's the right thing to do," end quote. Councilman Biassiata, you can't have it both ways anymore. Pandering to a small group of residents who are active on social media is not a justifiable reason to vote, to restrict all of your residents from their right to vote on an issue. It's time you start letting all residents in your word make up their own mind. The days of having it both ways are over, Councilman. Make decisions that allow the people you represent to have a voice at City Hall. I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
There's already a motion on the table. Is there a way to...
There's also...
There's a motion on the table. I'm trying to ask the law director if we can do this properly to allow you to speak.
You have to withdraw the motion to adjourn.
I will withdraw that motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like a brief rebuttal.
I need a second on that.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Did we just withdraw the...
Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
I need to clarify, I'm not sure we're voting on, we're voting on to withdraw the motion or to adjourn the meeting.
Withdrawing the motion.
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Cranach?
No.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Pietro?
Yes.
Trevis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
The original motion is withdrawn. Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of caught me off guard, but that's okay, and you're certainly entitled to your opinion. I take issue with the point that you don't think I got two dozen emails. Bringing them forward or reading them would only do more damage, but if my integrity's online, maybe that needs to happen. But briefly, I want to talk about issue 91. I do agree that when there's not a great risk, you should have the opportunity to bring something to vote. The specific thing with issue 91 was that originally it was a replacement slash renewal, and then if it didn't pass, it would have hurt the city to the $2.5 million a year. And I thought that was a little risky and kind of progressive. I do not dispute one thing that the council president said of all the great benefits that are deriving from that vote. And we could say about having it both ways, but it was purely a financial decision that I didn't want to run the risk of losing the money and put in the city in peril. Residents of Ward One were unhappy with that decision. They can vote me out. But after it was passed and put on the ballot, I supported it, put a newsletter out, went door-to-door, and many that attend these meetings regularly help me distribute newsletters. So I did not obstruct in any way, and I advocated for it because that was the best thing for the city, and my vote was not to suppress the residents of Ward One, but to protect the city as a whole from a potential losing $500,000 that we'll never get back. I'm happy that it passed in large part through the efforts of the people on this dais. So I wouldn't change my mind on that. In terms of the full-time mayor, it's been my observation, observation in other cities, that the mayor is putting in certainly a tremendous amount of hours, and so did at least one former mayor that I spoke to. Its current salary is ridiculous, and the comments that I made in the caucus were my personal opinion, and I stand by those as well. I started to get feedback on this issue. It made me say I need to ask more questions. I asked for further updates of my email list. It's about 270 large, and I got around 24 respondents, and I compared that to the deer issue that we had earlier in the year. I had 12. So based upon my experience, only a year and a half, it was a large enough number that I felt no vote was warranted over my own personal opinion. And that said, it was not about denying the right to people. One of the comments I made, that an overwhelming number of people preferred it to a change this large to the end of November ballot. So we could argue that a no vote was actually to increase the number of people that more than likely would have a voice in a major change of the city. That was the first thing that I derived from the feedback that I got from my residents and the number-one reason I stated at the last council meeting. So I never, we could disagree. That's fine. If the residents of Ward One think I misinterpreted their 100% response telling me not to do this, they want to vote in November as opposed to May because they want more people to vote, and the word they used exceedingly throughout all the emails, they felt that we, myself included, were trying to sneak something in. And given the history of the city, I don't think we need to sneak anything. This council's doing well. A lot of things have been accomplished, and I need to shy away from any resident feeling we're sneaking anything. So a no vote is saying, no, not that I disagree with the full-time mayor. I disagree, the residents that have provided their feedback disagreed with how we went about it. They want it on the November ballot, and they like our charter has a provision for a charter commission. So those were the high-level reasons I voted no. But thank you for giving me a chance to give that rebuttal, and I still think the best things are ahead, and I'm going to maintain a positive attitude.
Thank you. All I heard was circling in the wagon. With all the stuff that is going on in this city, there is a lot of confusion in social media with what we are doing to move Seven Hills forward. Your no vote has created more chaos on social media. You gave another platform to people to discuss things that simply are not factual, and every time you continue to pander and do exactly what you did with these, I'm calling you out from here on. I'm tired of it. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Cranach?
No.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Pietro?
Yes.
Trevis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
The original motion is withdrawn. Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of caught me off guard, but that's okay, and you're certainly entitled to your opinion. I take issue with the point that you don't think I got two dozen emails. Bringing them forward or reading them would only do more damage, but if my integrity's online, maybe that needs to happen. But briefly, I want to talk about issue 91. I do agree that when there's not a great risk, you should have the opportunity to bring something to vote. The specific thing with issue 91 was that originally it was a replacement slash renewal, and then if it didn't pass, it would have hurt the city to the $2.5 million a year. And I thought that was a little risky and kind of progressive. I do not dispute one thing that the council president said of all the great benefits that are deriving from that vote. And we could say about having it both ways, but it was purely a financial decision that I didn't want to run the risk of losing the money and put in the city in peril. Residents of Ward One were unhappy with that decision. They can vote me out. But after it was passed and put on the ballot, I supported it, put a newsletter out, went door-to-door, and many that attend these meetings regularly helped me distribute newsletters. So I did not obstruct in any way, and I advocated for it because that was the best thing for the city, and my vote was not to suppress the residents of Ward One, but to protect the city as a whole from a potential losing $500,000 that we'll never get back. I'm happy that it passed in large part through the efforts of the people on this dais. So I wouldn't change my mind on that. In terms of the full-time mayor, it's been my observation, observation in other cities, that the mayor is putting in certainly a tremendous amount of hours, and so did at least one former mayor that I spoke to. Its current salary is ridiculous, and the comments that I made in the caucus were my personal opinion, and I stand by those as well. I started to get feedback on this issue. It made me say I need to ask more questions. I asked for further updates of my email list. It's about 270 large, and I got around 24 respondents, and I compared that to the deer issue that we had earlier in the year. I had 12. So based upon my experience, only a year and a half, it was a large enough number that I felt no vote was warranted over my own personal opinion. And that said, it was not about denying the right to people.